Hello everyone here, take your seats. My name is Nate Fontaine, I'm the Mayor of Lovitzville. Thank you all for coming out. Hopefully you got to pick some of our restaurants here for dinner before you stopped in this evening. This is much larger than we had anticipated, so I apologize, we don't have as many seats set out, but you all are doing the absolute correct thing and setting up chairs for yourselves. So I do appreciate the thoughts and the effort for that. But again, welcome to the first 2019 Loudoun County Board of Supervisors debate. This is obviously for the Catoctin District. So thank you all for coming out and spending some time with us here this Monday evening. I am joined with other moderators. We do have Norm from Loudon Now. As well as Trevor from Loudon Times Mirror. If you do know friends that were unable to make it here this evening, we are live streaming. We had some technical difficulties, but we are live streaming from my Nate Fontaine, Mayor of Lovitzville page. Loudon Now as well as Loudon Times Mirror is also sharing the same live stream video. So if you know anyone who would like to look at it, please send them messages on the way So like I mentioned before, thank you all for all of your inputs. We did receive over 130 questions as of yesterday. I did not look this morning. Please, for those of you that are in the Blue Ridge Districts or have questions for the chair debate, please make sure you continue to send those questions into the Google form that we have already set up. Tonight's format, we will have each question, we'll have two minutes to introduce themselves. We'll have questions being asked by the three moderators. We have two sets of questions. We have candidate-specific questions, and for those, to make sure I get the rules right, each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to the specific question. The other candidates will each have 30 seconds to comment, and the original candidate will have 30 seconds to rebuttal after that. The second set of questions that we do have this evening are the general questions, and these questions are to be answered by each candidate. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer, and we'll kind of go in a round robin fashion. They've already chosen, the order was determined this evening by pulling straws or paper tickets to determine who's going to be first, second, and third. Well, we're very excited to have you all here this evening to learn more about your candidates. I will ask, we do have a large number of questions to go through, not the full 130 questions. I do ask that, we do kind of keep the gallery as quiet as possible so we can get enough time to get everybody's questions answered. Again, these questions did come from the public, so these are questions that you all wanted to have answered. The faster we get through them, the more questions we can get answered as this evening goes along. So this evening, please welcome, we happen to have with us, the first candidate to come up would be Sam Crowe. So please welcome Sam Crowe to the stage. The second lot was drawn by Caleb Kirshner, thank you sir. And the third lot was drawn by Forrest Hayes. So at this time, without further ado, because we've already started this evening, Sam, you have two minutes to introduce yourself, sir.
All right, well, thanks a lot Colt and Loudon Times Mirror and Loudon Now for putting this on, really appreciate it, and thanks everybody for coming out. I'm Sam Crowe, I live and work just down the road on George's Mill Farm. We milk goats and make goat cheese down there. I'm the eighth generation to live and work on my farm, but my wife Molly and I had to kind of reinvent our farm for the 21st century, started into a new thing with the goat cheese in 2013. We have two young kids that we're raising on the farm, and it's a great life out there. We're building our farm, like a lot of our friends and other farmers, building a rural economy out here in Western Loudoun, and I hope that down the road that my kids can take over what we've built and be successful at it, but they're not going to be able to if rural Loudoun isn't rural anymore. Agriculture and rural Loudoun go hand in hand, you can't have one without the other. Farms are what sustains rural Loudoun the way that it is, and farms can't exist in an area that's not rural for many different reasons. You can't drive your tractor down the road from one field to another, just getting down the road to do just about anything, I'm sure you guys can relate there. So I'm running to keep rural Loudoun rural. That's one issue, but it really is tied in with so many issues, because housing drives so many of our problems, high taxes, traffic, overcrowded schools. So we can't let that come from Eastern Loudoun into rural Loudoun, so it's really the top one through five issues. I'm happy to talk about any issues, I care deeply about a lot of issues. I'm happy to talk to anybody, anywhere, anytime, so please contact me, especially if your question doesn't make it tonight, I'm happy to talk about it, and I'm easy to find, please reach out. Thank you.
All right, so Caleb, you're next to introduce yourself for two minutes.
Thank you Nate. First, I want to thank Loudon Now, Loudon Times Mirror, the Colt Coalition for sponsoring this, I think is very healthy for our democracy. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight, I'm here with my wife, if you could raise your hand, my wife Whitney, she is here, of eight years. We live just outside of Hamilton, Virginia, right next to Paonian Springs. We have four boys, seven, six, three, and one, and if you know how to have a girl come up and talk to me later, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that. The, I grew up not far from here, I'm a local farm boy just over in Burkittsville, I was, I'm a, all my family goes back, they're all farmers, all the way back to the Mayflower, and I moved to, I was a sheep shearer, I was a sheep farmer, we had a small sheep farm there, and I moved to Loudoun County in 1995, so I've seen a ton of change. While in Loudoun County, I worked for a nonprofit, I traveled back and forth to Washington DC, I fought the traffic like many of you do, I had to pay the tolls like many of you do for about 10 years. I worked on Capitol Hill on certain education policy, I learned how to put together coalitions. I learned how to write legislation, how to get things done at a government level. While I was there, I went to school at night at George Mason University, I received my degree in finance with distinction, I went on to law school. I paid my way through law school while shearing sheep in Loudoun County, at one point I probably shared half the sheep, but I promise you, I will not pull the wool over your eyes tonight. Yes, I know, different reactions, but nonetheless, nonetheless, after I went through law school, my first job was working as a prosecuting attorney for Loudoun County Commonwealth's Attorney. And it was a great job, I protected Loudoun citizens, I made sure justice was brought. In the last 10 years, I have been a small businessman outside of Leesburg, in a small firm, where we have about 10 attorneys. And the reason I'm running is I want to basically bring my background, my training, and my experience to the Board of Supervisors to ensure at this critical time in history, we preserve Loudoun County and the West.
Mr. Forrest Hayes, your introduction for two minutes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Forrest Hayes. I want to recognize everyone here in the room, and thank you for being here, and the event sponsors for putting together such a wonderful event. My road to this room began last year, when my seven-year-old daughter Ellis' class tripled in size over one summer. Naturally, we had questions, plenty of them, how could this happen, and what does this mean? At a time when we began to hear stories of neighbors spending countless hours stuck on Route 15 and cut through traffic, literally invading the villages. We soon learned that unbridled home building on nearby subdivided farms, combined with unbalanced land use policies, outdated zoning codes, and unimaginative leadership are to blame for the crowded classrooms and sometimes deadly congested byways. Catoctin needs an experienced champion we can trust to protect our way of life. I am ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. If elected, my first act will be to expedite the already approved Phase One plan for Route 15, and finally, finally, break ground in 2020. You can clap for that if you want to. But traffic is only one of the problems that came along with unbridled development. In the last 30 years, we have lost more than 66,000 acres of farmland in Loudoun, and since then, the rural policy area has added more than 5,500, 5,500 houses and 44,000 residents, mostly in Catoctin. You can trust me, because I live on a farm on a gravel road by choice, not by coincidence of birth. Nine years ago, Nicole and I decided to raise our family in Loudoun County, in Western Loudoun County, and we're all in. You can trust me, because when I look out over this room, I don't see a group of voters and taxpayers, I see my friends and neighbors, and you can trust me to protect our way of life.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll go into our next portion of the debate, which is the candidate-specific questions. Some questions will be asked, each question will be asked specifically to a candidate who will have 90 seconds to respond. The other candidates will then have 30 seconds to comment on that response, and the original candidate will have 30 seconds to rebut. Based off the tickets that were drawn this morning, the first question will be for Sam Crowe. Again, these questions were submitted by the residents and other folks who filled out the Google form. You have stated that you are concerned about the expansion into the transition policy area. What new policy or policy changes would you work to implement to keep the rural West?
Well, for starters, it's kind of a two-fold thing. The Board of Supervisors this last time moved the boundary, rural transition boundary, for the first time since there's been a boundary. Everybody's trying to spin it like it's not a big deal, but it's a very big deal. It's, they say, oh, it was just a tiny little area, it's next to X, Y, and Z, it's not that rural. It's just the classic argument for encroachment, and now that we've moved the boundary, it's gonna, their people are going to be coming and asking to have it moved over and over again, and we have to hold the line and keep the boundary where it is. There seems to be a misunderstanding that the transition area is supposed to transition to something else, but it's supposed to be a transition between the suburban area and the rural area to keep them separated, and it's not supposed to change, the boundaries are meant to be in the same place, and I intend to keep them there. And the other part of it, like I said before, is agriculture is so important, and there are many different things that we can and will talk about, but the main message that I want to get out there is that it's no mystery what we need to do, surrounding counties are doing it, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, it's just a matter of actually doing it and getting the votes on the Board of Supervisor. As an independent candidate, I think I'm the best one to do that, and a farmer, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Caleb, you have 30 seconds.
So I can't really respond to this in full, but I will want to make a couple of remarks concerning the transition policy area. The TPA is exactly that, and I stood before the board and I said, listen, as a lawyer, words have meaning, transition. My concern about moving, for example, P2, P1 and P2 into the transition policy area are essentially that they, it sets a precedent. And so therefore, I really would like to see the TPA look like what it was originally intended to, and that was small hamlets, small communities, and so I'm less, I'm less concerned, is that a stopper of five, I'm sorry, bridge? Oh, finish my sentence. So I'm less concerned about what we call it and how it actually looks.
Forrest, you have 30 seconds, sir.
Yeah, I think there's a much more direct answer to this question. The TPA has already enjoyed more home building than we can accommodate with our services and infrastructure today. So I'm calling for a moratorium on all home building in the TPA going forward, anywhere in Catoctin. And I know we'll have to amend the zoning ordinances in order to do that, but I think I can get the four additional votes if I'm elected, because that's what this job is all about, getting to five.
And Sam, you have 30 seconds to rebut.
Yeah, thanks. Well, a moratorium might be nice, but that's not the way that our system of government works. It's important to understand that people have the right to develop their properties, but it has to be in a reasonable manner, and luckily, we do have a lot of flexibility in what reasonable means, and also a lot of programs that we can use to limit the growth, but without outright banning it, which is not possible.
All right, we are moving on to Caleb, this is your question here, sir. You have stated that you have the knowledge and background to champion the agribusiness community in fight to keep costs low and opportunities abundant. Please provide specific policies you would work to implement to become this champion. You have 90 seconds, Mr. Kirshner.
So real quickly, I just want to respond to this. First of all, moratorium in the transition policy area would actually be a violation of Fifth Amendment. A second, it would put a tremendous amount more pressure on the Western area. To answer the question directly that was asked of me, I feel passionate about agriculture, and I feel passionate about preserving the rural West. That was really the intention when the general plan was created in 2000, and that is, this is going to be a rural policy area. I have a lot of background in agribiz. I was raised on a farm, I worked on five different dairy farms, I ran the books on those farms, so I understand what it takes and how difficult it is to actually run an agricultural business. So that agricultural business and experience I'm going to bring to the board, I understand the mindset of a farmer, I understand many of the things that have to happen. In terms of actually preserving the rural West, I'm a lawyer, I'm a lawyer by training. We're going to have to rewrite the zoning code to this new comprehensive plan. The zoning code is essentially the meat that we put on the bones of the comprehensive plan, the new plan. And things like how we decide how we're going to do clustering, for example. Are we going to be, are we going to rewrite the zoning code in a way that we can preserve the maximum amount of usable agricultural land or not? So I'm going to use those legal skills and my experience to come and help preserve rural Loudoun.
Caleb, I'm going to give you 60 more seconds to provide specific policy you would introduce.
Specific policy in?
That you would do to implement, to keep costs low, opportunities abundant. I just didn't hear any real specific plan for that.
Costs low and opportunity abundant for, maybe I misheard your question.
For the agribusiness community.
Oh, agribusiness, I apologize, I thought you said something else. Costs low for the agribusiness community, first of all, regulation is a big issue that we are facing, the agribusiness. For example, a perfect example is the Health Department is making it much, very difficult for many of our agribusiness, for example, to bring in food trucks. So I would want to look at all those particular policies and give it a real close look as to what ones can we eliminate or can we pause. I also think a policy that would allow new startup agribusinesses, there's about, I think, 10 or 12 different permits that are required for new agribusiness to get started, perhaps put a three- or five-year waiver on that for some of these new fledgling agribusiness startups in order to help them get started before we actually require them to have some of these permits and some of these licenses. Obviously, some of them are necessary. I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
You know, can everyone hear me? My wife is on me, is my mic working? I mean, it's pretty close. Okay, I can, okay. I think that the very key to preserving the West is found in having successful agribusinesses and agritourism businesses. You know, the reality is that unless we can make these businesses profitable, and we invest in helping them to make a return, then they're going to fall to prey to the real estate developers, which is exactly what we don't want to have happen. One of the things I like to see is a more streamlined process and more business-friendly approach at the county government. We have to make it easier and understandable for new businesses to start. These are small businesses after all, and we've got to help them.
Okay, Sam?
So agriculture is changing a lot all over the country, but especially here in Loudoun. When Molly and I started our goat cheese operation, we were the only farmstead cheesemakers in the county who have their animals and make cheese. Now there's two more that have opened up, and we think that's great. The future for agriculture is bright, but the key is to keep houses off prime farmland long enough for a new generation of farmers and even retired folks, don't have to be young, but to come up with new models for farming that can be successful here.
Okay, and back to you, Caleb.
So one final specific policy, which was the question that was asked of me, that I would seek to implement, is basically a robust marketing process for our agribusiness. I think that the Department of Economic Development has done an excellent job, but I would want to make sure that Take Loudoun Home, Loudoun Grown, Loudoun Made gets the necessary funding that they need in order to continue to grow and thrive in Western Loudoun.
Okay, Forrest, this question's for you.
Sure.
What are your detailed actions, plans to, what are your detailed actions to implement your plan to bring broadband throughout the West? And if additional funding is needed, where would you find that money in the budget?
Thank you for that question, I'm really happy to address it. I think that rural broadband and access to the internet is an integral part of us having successful agribusinesses and for our agribusiness platform to perform at its highest level in the West, or anyplace else in the world. It's unconscionable that we have, you know, the same internet connectivity of some third-world countries. So one of the things I like to do is to leverage the very rooftops of our schools and our public buildings to develop an antenna leasing program. It's something I've done in other jurisdictions, we would erect antenna on each and every one of those buildings, as many as we can stand, and then lease them out to the major carriers, Verizon and Comcast. That would allow us to, I'm certain that we can realize several million dollars a year of off-the-books revenue, so to speak, and be able to make improvements to our schools, to our infrastructure, and all sorts of other investments by leveraging those fixed assets and never have the taxpayers pay an additional dime. I think that's a win-win.
So I can't, there's not much I can say about this complicated topic in 30 seconds, but I will say that nobody wants rural broadband more than me, I'm sitting on a goldmine of goat blooper videos that I can't upload, webcams, I mean, I'm sitting on a goldmine, and I'm going to be looking hard for anything to get those up on the web.
I hear you.
I agree with Sam, I don't have much that I can say in 30 seconds. Couple things, though, to put up our towers in Western Loudoun, it costs, the regulatory red tape costs is as much as it is to put up a tower in New York City. So we're going to look at those regulations and try to reduce those regulations. I would also say that I want to feed off from the most recent proposal by the Board of Supervisors, and that is to interconnect 50 of our schools and our government institutions throughout the West, I think it's like 53, 55 of them, and as a result of that, that will help to foster private investments by private network providers. Thank you.
Yeah. Just a point of clarification, I'm not talking about erecting towers, we're talking about antenna on the very rooftops of the buildings and public buildings. And an additional advantage that would provide us, it gives an opportunity to actually bring broadband and reliable connectivity to the actual schools. I am concerned that many of our schools in the West are not able to prepare our children for the jobs and the futures of the 21st century, because we just don't have the technology. It is unconscionable in the richest, fastest-growing county in America that we don't have broadband in all of our schools. I demand to have it in the West for each and every one of our children.
The next specific question, we'll go to Mr. Kirshner. So Mr. Kirshner, you have stated that you'll fight to hold the line against any future increased tax rate for residents. What specific actions will you do to, taking, I'm sorry, what specific actions will you be taking to increase other revenue sources?
So the question is, in order to hold the line, do we have, the first question is, do we have to increase revenue sources? The answer is obviously yes, because we're continuing to grow, and every house that we build costs about two or three times the taxes that actually, or the cost that it actually produces. So obviously, there are, I want to continue, I think it's 33% of our tax revenue over the past year has come now from commercial uses, that is, our data centers and other commercial uses throughout the county. So we're going to look very, I'm going to look hard and long at as many opportunities we have to increase that commercial base. I think a perfect opportunity that we have is this new asset around the silver line. It's not in the West, it's not going to impact the West, and so my thought would be to bring in a real, true urban developer, someone who now, put a coalition together, someone who knows how to build an urban, new urban development. What that will allow us to do is hopefully to attract some of your bigger fish, and those who support your bigger fish. Bringing some of those commercial, your Microsofts, your Amazons, all those that support those in the world, that's going to bring in a significant amount of revenue for the county, and guess what? That's going to keep your taxes low, my taxes low, and help us pay for more in additional services, including our schools and our roads.
Mr. Hayes, you have 30 seconds?
Sure. I'd like to just make one correction. So the actual math is, for every dollar that we, a developer spends, and that we, of taxes that is spent on a single-family home, it costs the county a dollar sixty cent to support that house. So one of the things I'd like to see in terms of additional revenue is for us to use the new Silverline metro footprints, where many of the new, much of the new density will go, and our data centers, and develop what's called Tax Increment Financing District, so we can capture an increment of that actual tax revenue into a dedicated account to use for other uses. That's an interesting way, an innovative way, to fund some projects without tax dollars.
Mr. Crowe.
So it's all, like they said, it's all about the houses, for every dollar that a house pays in taxes, it gets a dollar sixty in services, so that's what's driving our tax rate. I've spent a lot of time fighting to keep data centers away from places where they shouldn't be, like up on top of Short Hill or right along Goose Creek, but I'm not against, thank you, but I'm not against data centers, that data center's been a real windfall. My problem with them is that we're squandering this windfall of tax money subsidizing all this housing growth that will still be here if and when data centers are no longer in industry.
Mr. Kirshner, you have 30 seconds.
So to follow up and complete the thought that I had previously, I think it rather important that we look hard and long at developing our new area down around the metro. We have to compete with places like Fairfax, Reston, Washington DC, and in those particular places, these bigger companies are going to come in or provide a larger footprint, who are going to pay the tax dollars for being here. We have to make it business advantageous, tax advantageous, for them to come. So I'm going to look at ways that we will be able to encourage them to come and that we can grow our tax base in such a manner.
Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Hayes, and again, this question has the word "specific" in there, so if all candidates can try to be as specific as possible. And I know some of these are tough, but we're looking for something you would introduce very quickly in your first few months on the board, should you be elected. Mr. Hayes, what are your specific details behind implementing a smart growth development strategy that encourages workforce housing and mixed-use development around the metro stations?
Thank you for that question. I think that Loudoun is poised at this time to take a front row seat in terms of meeting the challenge of creating workforce and affordable housing. I think that the metro, the centers where the new Silverline is going to be located is ideal. One of the reasons I'm on the Governor's Housing Commission is because I think that there is exciting opportunity for us to work more closely with the Virginia Housing Development Authority, VHDA, to leverage tax credit deals. Today, a Lytech affordable housing developer cannot pencil or cannot close a deal in Loudoun, because we don't have a deal closing fund. We have to have a Housing Production Trust Fund into the hundreds of millions of dollars. In certain cities like Washington DC, the number is $135 million. I don't want that to come out of your pocket. That's one of the reasons I'm talking about doing Tax Increment Financing. We will capture the money from those data centers that are eating up the power, eating up our water, and reinvest that into housing for our teachers, our firemen, and our policemen. They deserve to live in our city, and we deserve the economic boom for having true affordable housing in Loudoun County once and for all.
I think we're taking it to Mr. Crowe's.
We have a huge bill coming from Metro and all the costs that were tied in to pay into the metro system, and we have special tax districts set up around the metro stations, and we have to have those be successful. It doesn't help at all that in the recent con-plan review, they added a lot of new housing outside of that area, because you have to have the demand in that area to get the kind, the type of construction that we need and want there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Kirshner.
Unlike Forrest, I don't want this huge government housing program in Loudoun County. I don't think it's worked in most parts of the country, and I don't think it's going to work here. The truth of the matter is, I do think that there are two very specific groups we need to help in terms of their affordable housing. That are our first response-
we need to help in terms of affordable housing. That are our first responders, our teachers, and those individuals who work in our administration, make less money. And then also, so bulking up the ADU program and our mortgage assistance programs for those specific groups, I think are absolutely important. And then, the other group would be those that help to, our nurses and those involved in some of our nonprofits, and perhaps partnering with some of those nonprofits to produce some form of affordable housing with them.
And back to you, Mr. Hayes.
So, the ADU program is antiquated at best. It's actually the Model T version of affordable housing. I don't know if my friends are aware of what's going on here, but Northern Virginia is looking for 300,000 units of affordable housing in the next 10 years, and they're gonna be on our doorstep. I don't want them on our farms. That's why I want to build multifamily and great density around those metros. This is about telling developers where they can, when they can, and what they should build. I want them to be over there. We'll build the density, and that's where the people from Amazon can live, not on the farm next door to me.
This one's for Sam. What policies would you work to implement or change to protect the rural and agricultural zoning designations while still protecting property rights of landowners who wish to maximize their potential land values?
Thanks. Well, like I said earlier, people have a fundamental right to develop their properties, but it has to be in a reasonable manner. So, there's a lot of things that we can do that don't take their rights away, and what we need is alternatives to just selling to a developer. That's the simplest thing to do. But it's a crying shame when we have programs like this, like conservation easements, where Virginia is the most generous, one of the most generous states in the country in terms of what they'll provide in terms of tax benefits. So, if a farmer decides they don't want to farm anymore and goes to sell their property, they can walk away with nearly 100% of the value of their property by doing a conservation easement and then selling to somebody that wants to farm that can buy it at the reduced cost. And it is just such a tragedy that any farm gets sold to a developer and that they don't, some of them don't even look into doing easements. We need to do everything that we can to encourage easements. The program that we have right now is a good program that is a, pays for half of the upfront costs of conservation easements, which can be a challenge. But as far as I know, nobody has qualified for that program yet, so we need to expand that and do everything that we can to get people to do easements and then sell their farms to farmers that can continue farming them.
Could you repeat the question, please? Sorry about that.
What policies would you work to implement or change to protect the rural and agricultural zoning designations while still protecting property rights of landowners who wish to maximize the potential land values?
Well, there's a number of ways to answer those questions, and I've got 30 seconds. So, I certainly think that we, it is important, I think, under the general plan originally. It wasn't talked that much about in this. Property rights are incredibly important. We want to protect those. I think how we actually do our zoning on those farms when they develop them, how we actually protect their, if we can implement certain programs like a TDR program, or advertise these conservation easements to our farmland, I think will be essentially helpful.
I think that in this board session, the most important piece of legislation that has been passed is Mr. Tony Buffington's Conservation Easement Program. However, if I am elected, one of the things I've said is I vow to work along with him to ensure that program is fully funded. What difference does it make to give someone $15,000 on a $35,000 cost? If you're a teacher or fireman that owns 20 acres, you may as well have given them nothing. So, I want to, for people that need it, I want to fully fund it. And we have to amend the comp plan to include a TDR program. Farmers ought to be able to sell those development rights, and I want those rights to go over to the zones where we're having the Silver Line open up next year.
Yeah, thanks. So, I don't want to criticize the program that we have too much because something is better than nothing. But with easements, what we need to remember is that the key to it is the avoided costs. $15,000, which is what they offer now, is in the neighborhood of what it costs to educate one student for one year. So, you can imagine the cost savings if we can encourage somebody, if we can pay one time to avoid the cost of having to pay that every year forever.
Okay. We're gonna head into the general questions round. Reminder, these questions will be answered by each of you. You all have 90 seconds, and we will rotate. For instance, this first one is going to Forrest, to you. And so, we'll go Forrest, Sam, Caleb, and then Sam, Caleb, Forrest, and then so on. So, first up here, one I'm sure you guys are very, very aware was coming up. What specifically is your plan to improve Route 15, both in terms of managing and expediting the process of completing the already-approved, already-funded widening to Montressor? In addition, what is your plan and vision for north of Montressor?
Thank you very much. As far as I'm concerned, the fixing of Route 15 is the number-one issue in Catoctin, and it's obviously become the number-one issue in this campaign. That's why I vowed that on day one, my first act will be to work with the staff, to roll up my own sleeves, and work to work out whatever. They say it's been a design phase for two years. It doesn't take that long to design anything. I've run infrastructure projects all over the country. So, I want to get involved and figure out what the obstacles are so that we can break ground in early 2020. That's one thing I want to do. And that will involve the four lanes up to Montressor. I think that we need to have roundabouts at that intersection. We don't need traffic lights, right? You know, that impedes the progress. I'll figure out a way to get our folks, our friends from River, from Raspberry Falls out there. I don't want to have them captive. They are our neighbors as well, but we can't have 500 homes hold the rest of us hostage. And I refuse to let anybody go through Luckets. We're gonna leave Luckets intact, and we're gonna go all the way to the bridge with two lanes, but I do want to add safety, shoulders, and bike lanes on either side, so that we can, we can avoid all these costly accidents. And then, I want to have the real conversation. After that, once we get all done, where are we gonna cross this bridge into perpetuity? Because Point of Rock is never gonna be a solution. That's a five-year Band-Aid with a big cost to it. So, we need to start investigating and working with Richmond and Annapolis, as well as the US Department of Transportation, figure out where else can we cross that river, even if it's not in the car. Maybe we just cross it in a train.
All right. Sam?
Safety is so essential on traffic, schools, and so many other issues. There's nothing more important than safety. Me and my family drive on Route 15 all the time, and the traffic is also so terrible that doing nothing is just, is just not an option. We can't do nothing. At the same time, I've, it's such a difficult question. I've been saying, I just want to have a plan that works. And the situation, we've, it's such a hard problem to solve because we've had, it's a perfect demonstration of how our comprehensive planning of land use and transportation haven't been aligned for so long. We've have allowed developments in that area without any road improvement. So, we're so backed up, it's a nightmare to think of even moving forward with our current plan with the traffic during construction and all that, and how long we have to wait. It's terrible. And of course, another big thing everybody knows about is the cut-through traffic from Maryland. This is, it's a corridor that goes through many states. We need to have a holistic plan for the whole corridor. Right now, we're talking about Loudoun County footing the entire bill for the project, and I don't want to have to pay that much money to get people from Maryland to Fairfax County. If it's so important for folks to get their jobs there, then the state needs to pay some money for, or the feds. We can't afford to do it all ourselves, and if we do, we need to make sure that we have a plan that works and don't wind up in, with just as much traffic as we have now.
Sam, I'm gonna follow up here. Can you give me, you know, kind of step one of your plan? Where would you start in an attempt to, I didn't necessarily hear where, what would be the starting point for your solution to Route 15?
Well, probably not gonna like to hear it, but I'd like to get stakeholders together again, because I think the last time, that nobody, nobody seems to be happy with the plan. I'm not even sure what the plan is for the whole corridor. Are we four-laning all the way to the bridge and daring Maryland to not?
So, a conversation.
To not expand the bridge. I'm sorry to say, because I hate traffic as much as anybody, but I want to have a plan that works, and I'm fearful that this one doesn't.
Okay. Mr. Kirschner?
Thank you. My goal as supervisor, and specifically about Route 15, is to provide our citizens safer and shorter commutes. As a former prosecutor, I went to a number of fatalities. And I'll never forget that when I went on to 15, where there was a head-on collision and a mother was laying there, dead, and her phone began to ring, and I knew exactly who was on the other end of that phone, and that was a family member saying, "Where are you? Why aren't you home?" And I knew pretty soon the state police were gonna have to come talk to them and tell her that the mother was dead. We've had 700 significant accidents on Route 15 since 2012. It is a danger to this community. I certainly support the board's current plan to four-lane all the way up to Raspberry. I was the only one sitting at this table who went and spoke before the board and took a position before the board and asked them to take significant steps in improving it above Selma or above Montressor. I was happy with either plan, quite frankly, and I will support the plan that they have put into place. That plan will go up to and around Luckets, and it will actually do something like this. It will make Luckets a destination as opposed to a pass-through. Luckets is, right now, a significant pass-through, and it's tons of traffic that goes through there. Now, it will can become a destination. So, 15 is a huge hazard. It is killing people, it is injuring people. People are taking an hour and a half to get home each and every day, and I will support the improvements that are currently in place.
All right. You can have 20 seconds. 20 seconds.
So, are you really talking about the election-year sham vote that was taken in July by the Board of Supervisors? I was in that building. I was there before you got there, and I was there when you, after you left. Whatever you said, nobody really understood. Because it was, the vote was about nothing. They're not going four-lanes to Point of Rock, because if I get elected, I'm gonna stop it. It's not gonna happen. So, they just wanted to pander to some voters because it's election year and make it seem like they're doing something. They're not doing anything. They had eight years to get this done. Gary Higgins has been sitting around doing nothing while people have been dying. The last time somebody died on 15, the next morning, I was out there on Route 15 giving my position. I don't need to come to that chamber and talk. I talk to the people, and I'm gonna get this job done.
Cut you off, Forrest. Why don't the other candidates take some additional time as well, certainly? Yeah, Sam or Caleb, whoever wants to start.
I was just gonna reiterate how important safety is. And it's just, you know, I went to college and studied science, and so I know a little bit about statistics. And it's just a good illustration of the way that politics are played these days, where they do a study and one option is 22% safer and one option is 24% safer. You know, if you know anything about statistics, you know, that's pretty much the same. But they take 2% difference and run with it and declare that four-lanes is a safer option, and it's simply not true. So, safety is the most important thing, and we need to have a safe corridor that has flow so people can get where they're going.
Certainly. I think it's pretty simple math. It's, we're having deaths, and we're having injuries, and we're having hour-and-a-half commutes, and we're having kids on school buses taking forever to get back and forth to school. 15 is a mess. It has to be fixed. Quite frankly, it should have been fixed 15 years ago. I agree with that. And I'm certainly going to hit the ground running. The first thing I'm gonna do is make sure, figure out any way we can do to expedite these changes that have now been put into place and find funding necessary to do it.
Okay. The next question, we'll go through. The cycle will be Sam to Caleb to Forrest. So, Sam, the question is, what are your thoughts on PDRs and TDRs? What is the difference? And do you support either or both as appropriate for Western Loudoun?
So, PDR is obviously is purchase of development rights. I think that program has a lot of potential. At the Rural Summit that happened a little while back, there was a woman from Clark County that runs their program, and she described how they were able to protect many farms forever by spending just pennies on the dollar, Clark County spending pennies on the dollar because there's so much matching money from the state and feds and other things, and the folks donating a substantial portion. So, that would require the county to spend money, but I think there's definitely an argument that could be made that it's money well-spent. TDRs, transfer development rights, has some potential, but you have to have an area that is gonna receive those rights, and nowhere really wants to receive them. And also, no one, nobody really has to buy the rights because our Board of Supervisors is giving them so many rights, more than they want to build in the areas that they might put them as it is. So, it's hard to see that program working. But I really can't believe that the board didn't put them in the plan because they're just putting them, you have to have them in the plan to be able to use them at some point, if we can figure out a way to do it. And to not even have them in the plan for a potential board to possibly use is ridiculous. And it really is a perfect illustration of the way that politics gets involved and screws everything up, because one side jumped on PDRs, thought it was great. One side jumped on TDRs, thought it was great, and now we don't have either one.
Mr. Kirschner, your time.
Thank you. I am a fan of TDRs. I think TDRs are one of many different tools that are available, that are in the tool chest of helping to preserve rural open area. Essentially, what you have is a ascending area and a receiving area. The idea and the concept, I think, given this crowd and given the seat we're running for, would be to make Catoctin and many of the rural areas up here, we would designate what those were our ascending area. We would, and then we would, we would create a receiving area. That is yet to be determined, but certainly there is going to be a significant amount of development. It would allow the area that is developing to increase their density if the developer came in and bought those TDRs. The great thing about this, it removes the middleman. It removes the government. It is a private entity transaction between the two. PDRs are, in my mind, are a little bit more complicated. I'm not general, I don't like, I'm not generally into the business of, hey, I'm gonna go take your money over here as a taxpayer, and I'm gonna go buy the property rights of some farmer over here. If, however, you could set up a PDR program that created some sort of banking system, where, and it's really a hybrid of a TDR system, where you had a PDR program that was funded through proffers that were paid, for example, by developers and that sort of thing, and then those applying for the PDR program with that money then could sell their development rights back to the county. That certainly would be something to take a very serious look at, and hopefully would be one of those excellent tools in the tool shed.
Okay. Mr. Hayes, your turn, sir.
I think that both of these programs are awesome programs that we should have in our tool belt. First, the PDR, purchase of development rights, I would love to see it enacted. However, we need to have more conversations about it. I think that the crux of it is, and the inflection point is, what is the funding source? I wouldn't want to put an additional cost on the taxpayers. So, I think there's gotta be a big conversation about where do we find the money to purchase these development rights? And then, secondly, one thing that people never think about unless you actually do government for a living is how are we gonna administrate that? We'll need to stand up a new agency, because now we're talking about the government taking possession of these, of these development rights, and then having to hold them and dispense them in some way so that we recover a return on our investment. So, I think that, you know, I'd love to see it happen, but we need to talk about it a little bit more. I'd be happy to have that conversation if elected. But the TDRs, it's a no-brainer. Transfer of development rights, we have to have that available to our farmers. I live next door to a 300-acre beef farm, and my friend is almost 85 years old. And at the end of his time... And at the end of his time farming, I'd like him to be able to sell those development rights and allow that developer to take that density over to the metro center, metro area and build some affordable housing as opposed to selling the actual farm. So that's what I want to see happen. I think that is a win-win for everybody. And the first thing I would do, the second thing I'd do, first thing is fix Rule 15. Second thing, amend the comp plan to include the TDR as something that's eligible to be talked about as the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we'll start with Caleb on this one. Do you support the recent board decision to give Loudoun Water the first right refusal for the Leesburg J LMA? Do you, if you oppose that, what actions would you take if elected?
So, I haven't actually, I'll be quite frank, I haven't studied the issue in depth. I am somewhat familiar with the issue. I'll go, give you a personal story about that. JMLA area, for those of you who don't know, run kind of around the, the town of Leesburg there. And the board recently said, hey, you don't have to buy your wa, you're not, when you're developing in here, you don't have to buy your water from Leesburg anymore. I used to live in River Creek and I have a number of friends who live down the River Creek corridor. And they pay astronomical rates for their water. Huge rates for their water. And I think this vote, although of course it is in a lawsuit, is very telling. Leesburg immediately sued the county saying, hey, we want to continue to gouge you with our astronomical rates. Therefore, we're going to sue you so we can get that right back. I think that's a problem. And so, obviously the courts are going to work it out. I'm a lawyer, I understand how that works. It may take a number of years. Apparently there was some documentation back in the day that may have been some agreement. But in terms of the concept, it's a great concept. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure costs are reduced for the citizens of Catoctin and many of those in the J LMA under the Leesburg area are in the Catoctin district. I'm going to fight for you.
I am very versed in this and my position is that I'm fine with Loudoun Water having the first right refusal. What I'm not okay with is the town of Leesburg getting left holding the bag. I think that this is an opportunity for compromise. All of these people are Loudoun County residents and we need to be fair. So I know that it's a little more costly, the water in Leesburg, but I think that what we can do, and this has been discussed, I've discussed it with people at the Peterson Group who are involved in this process and with our, our supervisor from Leesburg, I think that what we can do is have Loudoun Water reimburse or give some of the money back to Leesburg, so the town of Leesburg, so that they are not entirely without. Let's face it, they're building on their land and we need to also look out for the town of Leesburg. So I think there's a compromise to be made. I know they've gone to court. I don't like going to court. Court, it's costly. There's two different sides of a contract, the business terms and the legal terms. Let's focus on the business terms and sit down with a spirit of cooperation and figure out a way that both the town of Leesburg and the county can win. That's what I would like to do.
This, this issue is a good example of the comp plan process, which I was disappointed with throughout. This is, this is a big issue for the town and Loudoun Water and planning in general and, and yet we didn't hear anything about it until the last minute when it gets thrown into the plan and everybody, nobody knows where it came from or, or how it happened. This is the kind of thing that we need to have in-depth discussions about before we, we make a decision like that and wind up in court. It's never good to wind up in court. And you certainly don't, people, people need to, need to have water, obviously, and, and you can't be price gouging them. I'm not sure that's the case. But you can't, you can't change things up on the town of Leesburg like that if it, if it's, if they've been planning on something for so long, making all these investments and then all of a sudden you, you change it on them without even having them involved in the discussions to figure it out in the first place. And that goes for a lot of other towns, not getting the involvement on board decisions that, that they should. I really want to be a champion for the towns on, on a lot of different issues. Water is very important and, and the J LMA's in general. And another interesting thing about J LMA's is that they were designed to be an area where the town would have some say on what the county did in that area since it affected them so much, but it's basically become the place where the town is expected to annex into eventually and, and that should not be the case. And I don't know how it became the case and we're going to make it not the case.
Can I respond? We want to move on. We are not getting anywhere, we're not getting anywhere close to all of our questions.
This is an important point. It's an important point on this matter.
All right, real quick.
I just want to point out that one of the reasons I'm so interested in a compromise, I think people are missing the point because the, the issue is around businesses that want to locate in the Leesburg area feeling that the cost of doing business is too high. So what we want to do is to find a way to mitigate and cooperate so that the town gets something, so that Loudoun Water gets something, so the business actually comes. Because the alternative is they'd never come and we lose that opportunity. It could be a data center, everybody loves the taxes they spin off, or it could be a business that has jobs with it.
Okay, 30 seconds.
Thank you very much. I actually happen to know some of the companies that wanted to build in this JMLA and have spoken with them. This was a deal breaker for them. This is the kind of government policy, the high costs that drive business away.
That's right.
Therefore, we must absolutely be very careful about, about sharing costs and this and that. No, we want our businesses to come, we want their revenue, we want their jobs. When we start taxing them, even if it's with water or whatever, then they're going to go somewhere else.
Okay. Sam, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, we need, we need to have, I find myself arguing a lot of times just for planning in general. We need to have a plan. We need to give businesses, let businesses know what, where we're going in the future. It ties back to the rural, rural economy. I'm working, building my farm. Everybody says nice things about preserving the rural area, but then they turn around and in a bipartisan manner, move the line out and leaving all of us out here in the rural area wondering what the plan is and if we're still going to have our businesses in, in the coming years.
Thank you, everyone. This is for you, Mr. Hayes, and we're going to shift gears here to the county's more than $3 billion budget. All of you have stated in some form or fashion that you're for controlling expenditures. Name one either county, department, or specific program within the county. Name one that you would cut funding for or reduce, cut or reduce funding for, and then name another department or program that you think needs an increase in funding. And we're going Forrest, Caleb, Sam here.
You know, I'll be quite honest with you. I've not looked at one area in our budget or one department that can stand any cuts. We've actually become a $3 billion corporation and we have more performance in front of us than we can handle with the amount of staff that we have and resources we have today. If anything, we need to be more professionalized and prepared to, to tackle all the opportunities ahead of us. But however, I would make additional investments in the area of affordable housing. I think that, you know, running the affordable housing platform out of another agency and not having a true housing and community development agency with true housing and community development, affordable housing professionals, running it and cutting deals so that we can increase our, we can, we can, we can have a, a different mix of product types and we can increase our affordable housing around the metros, is something we have to do. We're behind the times. At a time when in Northern Virginia, we have to produce over 300,000 units, we need to open up a housing department and stock it with housing professionals so that we can meet the demand.
And Caleb.
So, I haven't looked at our budget. Quite frankly, I think our current board has done an excellent job in terms of how they've allocated the money. I don't, can't think of a particular program or department that, you know, we need to go around and do some significant cutting. I think there's always places we can save money and I think you can go department by department and look at places that you can save money. In terms of places that I think can always use and is, or increase funding are our police officers and our schools and our teachers. I, I'm glad that about 70% of our teachers get to actually live in the county. That's better than a lot of counties surrounding Fairfax and whatnot. So I think we're doing a pretty good job paying our teachers, but we need to constantly be looking at, make sure our teachers are fully and well-funded. I am the premier and preferred attorney for the Police Benevolence Association in Northern Virginia. I represent, I've represented hundreds of police officers and I get to talk to them on a regular basis. And I know how much money they make and I know how they struggle. I think it's really, really important that we continue to keep their salaries up, A, so they can continue to live here and, and B, so that we can attract the best possible law enforcement force that we can. I think, I think the sheriff has done a pretty good job getting us funding for those and I would, as a board member, continue to make sure we, we maximize our dollars in those particular areas.
Sam.
So our, our budget is growing so much every year. The, the question really is to say, where are we going to, where are we going to grow it more and where are we going to not grow it so much? So I'm going to join these guys and not get into specifics about where to, where to cut from. But where I would certainly start is anything that is money well-spent, that, that saves us money in the long run. A lot of it, it's all, it's all about houses. So any money that we can spend to avoid having houses is what, what drives our, our budget in the first place would be money well-spent. And another, another place is with teachers, firefighters, police and all these other employees of ours. It makes no sense to nickel and dime them on their salaries when they just, when we're spending so much to train them and then they, when we're not competitive with other, other districts and they just up and leave and we have so much turnover. I mean, if you, if you work with many departments in Loudoun County government, you'll, you'll, you'll realize how much turnover we have and how many seats are empty and are, so in the long run, one that, one that maybe we could cut would be HR. If we can, if we can stop having so, so much turnover, that could be, that could be a good spot. And, you know, thank, hey, thank you. And, you know, you hear so much talk about, oh, we need affordable housing for, for our police and fire and teachers and basically talking about, are we going to build enough houses that the overall cost is going to come down such that they could afford them? If we're really that concerned, maybe we should just consider paying them more, especially if it's just the regional average.
Okay, this next question regards public safety. It'll go from Caleb, Sam to Forrest. Our country and nation are in the midst of an opioid crisis. The county does not have its own detox or other inpatient substance use disorder services. County residents have to wait for available beds outside the county or even out of the state, if covered by insurance. All of this leads to increased overdose risk and increased dependency. What is your plan to address, address the substance use needs of residents in Loudoun County? So again, this will go to Caleb first.
So, to start with, I, this, this particular subject strikes pretty close to home for me. I do a lot of legal work. I've represented a few people in jail before. In the last two years, I've gone to about six funerals from individuals who had opioid addictions. They stayed in jail for a while, they got out and they took opioid, they took cocaine, or not cocaine, excuse me, they took heroin or a dose of heroin of some sort that had fentanyl in it and they died. This cannot be. So there are two things that I would do. We need to continue to do a significant job enforcing our drug laws in this county. Making sure that we stop it from coming over our borders and making sure that those who peddle it are punished significantly. But secondly, I think there's also a very important mental health aspect to this. And my good friend John Whippeck, who's running for chair, has proposed and I, I joined him in this proposal and that is to bring in a small depart, a, a small group of individuals into the county and to start a mental health department to identify ways that we can indeed assist those who have these addictions and need help and are trying to get clean. Thank you.
Next to Sam.
Yeah, no, nothing's more important than, than safety and, and the health of, of everybody in our community. So we need to do everything we can to stop this. I mean, talk about cost savings. This is, this is an area where we need to, we need to spend what it takes to get out ahead of this problem because the, the cost savings are going to be astronomical. I'm not an expert in this field and I'm, I'm, I'm a farmer, not, not an expert, but this is one of the, the places and, and we can probably find, find many more where I'm glad to have the staff that we have in the county, the sheriff and all these other people that are experts. And really the job of the supervisor is, is to look at things in really big picture and to consult with all the different experts, bring them together, ask good questions, figure out what we can do and, and really find solutions. So I'm not going to sit up here and pretend like I, I have all the answers, but it's something that I'm deeply concerned about. Nothing's more important than safety and, and health of everybody. So I'm willing to do what needs to be done to get out ahead of this problem. And like I said, we will save so much money in the long run if, if we can take care of this, take care of this problem.
Forrest, your turn, sir.
You know, the opioid crisis is something that touches all of us. You know, I happen to live in Waterford, which is, you know, one of the more settled and stable areas and the richest, fastest-growing county in America. But I can name people in my neighborhood who have children who have suffered from this disease because it is a disease. And I don't believe in locking up people who are sick. They need help. And the question was about the fact that we don't have enough beds for people who are addicted in the richest, fastest-growing county in America. So when I talk about affordable housing and setting up a true housing platform and a housing department, permanent supportive housing is a form of low-income, of affordable housing that we need. It doesn't cost more. It's not about the matrix of you're building more and more housing, then some kind of way magically the costs come down. No, I'm talking about using low-income tax credits, syndicating them, taking that revenue, then going and issuing a bond, putting that in the capital stack. And then we have a deal closing fund of $100 million called a Housing Production Trust Fund and we close these deals so that our teachers and our farm, and our, and our policemen and our, and our firemen have someplace to live that they can afford that's not a half a million dollars, right? And so that our people who are addicted and sick have someplace to go and get treatment. It's called permanent supportive housing. We have to have it.
Guys, to try to get more questions in, we are going to switch to 60 seconds. So, clock, clock keeper here.
Is that for me? I'm talking too long.
Want to stay on public safety one more time? And we'll go Sam, Forrest, Caleb. Given the recent shooting incidents, do you think there are any changes need to be made in Loudoun County ordinances to increase safety?
Well, I just want to say at the start that I am 100% against anybody shooting houses or anybody, or anybody else. Just wanted to make that absolutely clear. Now, as far as I know, shooting houses and, and people is, is a crime, or at least I hope it is. So I don't know why these people aren't being successfully charged with the crime. Well, this most recent person is charged, but some other folks were charged and then So if it's a, if it's a law problem, then, then we need to change the law and that is most likely going to be at the state level. So I would support that in terms of if, if it's, if it's not enough of a crime or it's not prosecutable, when somebody shoots a house or a person, to have consequences for that, then, then obviously we need to, we need to change that law.
One of the things I would like to see and I'm very passionate about, I'd like to see us pass an ordinance that would demand that Loudoun County put the resources in place so that we will fully staff all of our fire engines with professional firefighters. And this is not to exclude our wonderful volunteers, but in this day and age and a $3 billion corporation with the kind of investments we have, we have to have a full-time professional firefighting force on every level and every department. So that's number one. The other thing is I feel very strongly about school safety. Fortunately, we've been very, 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 very lucky in Loudoun. But I am, and I'm not a fan of people walking around schools with guns on their hips, but I do know for a fact- I do know for a fact that there's technology that exists that can allow us to harden our buildings against intruders and make sure that no one who we don't want to get into a building can get into a building. We do it every day in our government buildings, we do it every day in our courthouses. Why is it not good enough for our kids? I think that we have to do that and get them out of those trailers. I don't want our children in those trailers. They're dangerous and then, and they're just terrible for your health.
I'm a hunter. I am a outdoorsman, and I have handled guns all of my life. And I've never, ever had an accidental discharge or acted recklessly with a firearm. I'm a firm believer in laws that will punish people that do such things. And I believe the Second Amendment is just as important as the First, Fourth, Fifth, Nineteenth Amendment, which gives women the right to vote. And if you're going to propose laws that are going to infringe on any of those rights, the Constitution, as well as the Supreme Court, as well as me personally, you're gonna have to look at that law with a tremendous amount of scrutiny. And if it, if it, if it, first of all, you have to, does it even have the impact you want it to have? And secondly, does it severely diminish the rights and ability of people who lawfully handle their firearms? And so therefore, I would generally not support any sort of change to our ordinance unless it met all those criteria that I talked about.
All right. I think we're gonna go Caleb, Sam, Forrest here. Apologies. What do you feel is the biggest misstep that the current Board of Supervisors has made?
Not reviewing the comprehensive plan for 20 years. State law requires that we review our comprehensive plan or our general plan every five years. We decided to undertake this, and the last time I think it was reviewed, and, and some of you probably in this room may not even have been alive then, there's a few youngsters here, almost 20 years ago, quite frankly. And so I'm glad they finally did it, but I think this, a board should have taken it on, or several boards ago, quite frankly. And so I would propose, and, and what we had was monster consternation. We had 90 days to figure out a comprehensive plan and vote on a comprehensive plan. And guess what? That's how bad law happens, when things get pressed through and pushed through in a short manner. So I would propose reviewing each policy area one every year to make sure it's on an ongoing basis that we meet state law and we actually are able to address the specific policy areas that are within our comprehensive plan.
Sam.
Yep. We're, we're growing, we're growing too fast. I think that's clear to everybody. We can't, we're adding all these houses all the time, and our roads, schools can't keep up. That's why our taxes are so high. We're spending, 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 but it's still not enough. And everybody realizes that. Survey after survey through the years, everybody says, control the growth, stop building so many houses. And then, and with the comp plan review process, started out with public input overwhelmingly, like 95% of people said, don't increase the housing density. And then what does the board do but turn around and increase the housing density in the transition area? And importantly, move the boundary line, the rural transition boundary, for the first time since we've had a boundary that is gonna, we're gonna see the consequences of that with, with the next board. Just flagrantly ignoring the public opinion. And that's what I've, I was of that opinion. I fought up to, to protect rural Loudoun and to not have more houses for a long time, but it was really seeing the public get completely ignored that motivated me to, to stand up and run for office.
Caleb, you're making this too easy, man. So the last two boards have been controlled by your party. And now you've just pointed out for me, so I don't have to say that, you know, with their preoccupation of holding the door open so these developers can ravage through our, our farmland, they forgot to pass the land use bill that is required for this county. So they got to that last. And guess what? I think the most egregious thing that has happened in this session was taking P1 and P2 from the rural policy area. It's unconscionable. They say, oh, it's, it's less than a square mile. I don't want to surrender a square foot of the rural policy area because it's a slippery slope. If we let them have one foot, if you give them an inch, they'll take a mile.
Caleb, since, Mr., Caleb, since Mr. Hayes mentioned you by name, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I, I don't even know what he was talking about. I was talking about how often we review the comprehensive plan, and he attacks the particular party I happen to be affiliated, because they happen to be in control of it, and saying something about P1 and P2. Truth of the matter is, I think the chairman of the board is a Democrat. So I don't really think that has, I don't think it really has, really relevant in terms of the question.
Okay. Thank you very much. So next question?
Can I respond?
No, sir, we're gonna move on to the next question, please.
I gotta, he, he, he said something about...
No, sir, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next question, please. So the next question's gonna be regarding public safety. The Gable Farm Personal Recreational Field Site in Hamilton, which is being used, currently used as a dump site, has revealed concerns with departmental communications and land use oversight. For example, nearly a year after the issues were uncovered, the property still sits in a state of limbo with the county. As a supervisor, what will you do to create a more efficient county government that will identify problems like the Gable Farm? And what will you do to ensure the environmental quality of our district is protected when necessary, remediated? This question's gonna go to Sam, Forrest, and then Caleb.
So we have a lot of room for improvement with the enforcement of the rules that we have here in the county. It's a very complicated issue, and this is one place where having a supervisor that treats the supervisor position like a full-time job and is, and is out there every day, getting the answers to these questions is so important. And that's what I pledge to do. We need a, a full-time supervisor that's in the community all the time, is available, responds to people's complaints early, and doesn't let up until they go from department to department and figure out what's going on and get some real enforcement here. And another thing I'll mention on, on this one is that this, the place where they're doing this dumping is, is a farm. And they started out with the, with dumping the dirt as a farm purpose that turned out to not be true. And nothing bothers me more as a farmer than to see people abusing the farm laws and putting them in danger for all of us. And I'm gonna be very stern on stamping that out.
Forrest, your turn, sir.
You know, I just wanna, I wanna go back for a second to our last question, just be, make it very clear. The very morning after I realized that Phyllis Randall voted to bring P1 and P2 out of the rural policy area, I let her know that's something I definitely do not agree with. And on that one, we part company. So it doesn't matter if you're Republican, Democrat, Independent. If you come for our land in Catoctin, you're not on my side, and I'm gonna fight you with every fiber of my beak. I couldn't care less if you're a Democrat or a Republican. As relates to this heinous abuse of a poor code enforcement apparatus that happened over in Hamilton, I think that it's very simple. And, and I will be a, a full-time supervisor, but I'm not gonna be the staff. What we need to do is set policy. And for, for one thing, it should not be complaint-driven. We need a real code enforcement apparatus in Loudoun County that goes out and checks and makes sure that we approve something, that you're operating and in compliance with what we approved. This business of, uh, we don't go out unless you complain, that's for a small Mayberry. Again, we are a $3 million corporation now. Let's start acting like one.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll go next to Caleb.
One of the problems with Forrest's plan about, about greater enforcement is it certainly costs significantly more. I'm not against enforcement. I definitely think enforcement needs to happen. This, this kinda, this issue kinda hits a little bit close to home. I literally live right across from that, that farm. And the, the Gable Farm's had a little bit of bad luck recently here, I think, between the shooting and the dumping. They're in a little bit of a trouble over there. But I, I think in this particular case, you know, you gotta look at things on a case-by-case basis. It was pretty evident. It was an abuse of the permit that they had. I think these permits, I think the board, and certainly if they haven't done it yet, I think when I get in there, we're gonna tighten this up. You had a three-year permit with no policing and no one was looking at it. I think also in this county, and I do agree that, you know, when someone gives you an anonymous tip, it needs to be looked at by someone's staff. What happens is you have these agricultural uses that may be being abused or other uses within the rural policy area. And I don't think, quite frankly, what they were doing on the Gable Farm should be a lawful rural use as a general rule, certainly not to that extent.
Call me by name. I just want to point out that what's happened over at the Gable Farm, I think, is well beyond an issue of code enforcement. Now we're talking about an issue of environmental justice. Why in the world do my neighbors in Hamilton have to endure that kind of gross misuse of, of, of the confidence of the county? And then can, and they're still waiting on somebody to come clean it up. I've talked to the mayor of Hamilton, said he was at the gas station and saw somebody with a big truck full of crazy garbage and said, say, hey, where are you going? Oh, I'm going to the landfill up the street. It's not a landfill. It's the legal dumping area. Call it what it is.
Move on, next question.
And we need to get rid of it and not have it happen again.
Anybody else on that one?
I can say my piece in one minute. We're good.
Well, I would, I would just like to add that this is, this is an example of, you know, the dirt is, is still there because once you dump dirt and, and whatever else they dumped out there, it's really hard to take back up. So that's why we need to be, prevent these things from the start. And you can, you can, you can expand that out metaphorically to a lot, a lot of other things.
We spent a lot of time in this past hour and a half talking about land use and zoning and planning decisions. And there's one person in the Catoctin District that's gonna be, that if you're elected, will be talking about more than you will, and that's your planning commissioner. So what kind of traits or experience we'd be looking for when you choose a planning commissioner to work through these issues before they come to you? Forrest, Caleb, Sam.
I think that it's very important, and I am pledging that my pick for planning commissioner will be someone who understands the plight of the Catoctin landowner and the farmers and will be in a position to combat the overly, the, 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 the planning commission's been stacked with developer types. And I think that we need to balance that with someone who understands, you know, not just how to be a farmer, but farming policy and how, and land use policy that will benefit our farmers. And I need, I'll be looking for that type of individual who has courage and conviction to stand up even if he might be out, he or she might be outnumbered in that room. That's what I'll be looking for.
Thank you. So the, the position of the planning commissioner for the Board of Supervisors is like picking your vice president. 85%, 80%, I don't know what the percentage is, of what we do on the Board of Supervisors is land use. And the, uh, the planning commissioner has, plays a really big role. So I'm gonna be extremely careful how I pick that person. Uh, that person's gonna be a person of intelligence. That person's gonna be a person who has leadership skills, who has been in a leadership position before. That person is gonna be a regular communicator with me. I, I know some of the current Board of Supervisors, they don't communicate regularly with their, their commissioner. And I think that's problematic, and a lot of times, the vision that I will have will not be passed down. The person's gonna be a Catoctin resident, 100%, and is gonna have the same sensitivities that I have to the rural policy, transition policy, and the JML area that I think are important, that we must keep them distinct. And that's the kind of person that I will choose as my commissioner.
Well, I was really relieved when you said planning commissioner, because when you first started out with that question, I, I thought you were gonna say Trump. And that's part of the reason that I wanted to run as an, as an independent in the, in this race is because the, the land use issues are the number one thing, and I didn't want that, this whole race for supervisor to, to wind up being between the two parties fighting about, about Trump and whether, whether he's bad or good and all that. So anyway, I was, I was relieved that that wasn't what the question was about. Planning commission is, is so important. On my work, fighting, fighting with AT&amp;T and the data center and, and managing to keep the data center off the mountain, I really realized how, that was one of the first times that I realized how important the planning commission is and the power that they have. And then we saw it more recently with the comp plan, where they do much of the work and then the board has such little time on it. So it's a very important position. And another thing I learned is how many knowledgeable, talented folks there are out there with, with wide variety of skills. So it's gonna be a really hard choice. There's a lot, a lot of people to choose from, good candidates.
Okay. And I think here we're gonna go Sam, Forrest, Caleb. The bulk of Loudoun County's budget goes to Loudoun County Public Schools. What role do you believe a supervisor has in providing input to the school board and kind of guiding efficiency of operations and management of the superintendent? What role, if any, do you think a supervisor has in overseeing the school system? Sam and Forrest and Caleb, yep.
Well, I, I foresee this being a really frustrating part of the job of supervisors because, like you said, so much of, of the, of the budget is spent on schools and, and as supervisor, we have very little control about how that money is spent. So overall, that's why the, the position of the supervisor is to look really big picture here. There's a lot of improvements we, we need to make to the schools, but the number one reason that our taxes are so high, too high, and yet we don't have enough money for the schools is because we're adding so many students all the time. It's all about the houses, and that's the, that's the number one job of supervisors is land use. So when the supervisors are adding all this housing density and then expect the school board to make, to make all these tough decisions, I really feel sorry for the, for the school board folks, and I'm glad I'm running for supervisor, not, not school board.
It was Forrest.
It was Forrest. You know, clearly, almost 66% of every dollar of our property taxes is spent on the public schools. And I think that is a, an investment in our children's future. However, I think that as the, as the caretakers of the spending apparatus for the county, that the supervisors all have a much closer relationship to the development of the budget as well as the funding levels. This business of the school board and the school system just giving them a budget and they, they have to pass it or don't pass it, I don't think that's a deliberative process that gives us the best result for our kids. I mean, people vote at the district level for a supervisor because they have confidence in that person. They also vote for a school board member because they have confidence in, in that person. And I think the most important thing that they could do is collaborate and work collaboratively together to make sure that we have the best outcome on an annual basis for our kids. So I'd like to see that entire process reformed so that the people who are actually holding the purse strings have more of a say on exactly what we do with that money.
And Caleb, you soon.
Thank you very much. Obviously, the Board of Supervisor has limited voting power, except for approving or disapproving the budget. But I do think that the person that you're sharing your district with and who shared the counterpart and on the school board itself is actually a very important person as far as your relationship with them. Not maybe as, as important as the planning commissioner, but certainly of, of a secondary nature. My goal, whoever that is that will be elected, would be to build a close relationship with them. There are some priorities that are really important to me that will come up in the school budget. Do we have enough spending to provide enough buses for these incredibly long routes that are going on? Do we have enough money to fund our small schools? Are we looking at cutting our small schools? Those are things that I would work closely with my, my counterpart on the school board. And I do agree with Forrest for once, collaboration is excellent.
Great. Thank you very much. This will be the last question of this evening before we get a chance for you all to do your closing statements. So last question this evening, we'll go from Forrest to Caleb to Sam in the exact opposite order of how we started today. Do you think the sheriff, sheriff office model no longer supports the current size and growth of Loudoun County? If it does not support, I'm sorry, if it does not fit, do you support transitioning to a police department? So Forrest.
Well, first I'll say that I was pleasantly surprised to hear Caleb say that he would support the public schools in Loudoun County and work collaboratively with the person who's elected as a school board member for Catoctin. Because I have information that he has publicly called for the abol... Because I have information that he has publicly called for the abolishment of the U.S. Department of Education. So, I don't understand, that is the money that is tied to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and any number of wonderful programs throughout our nation that service our youth. So, I have a little problem taking you at your word on that one, because I've, you know, publicly I've seen and written that you've called for the abolishment of the very agency that oversees this policy and sends the money down through the states. As it relates to the police department, I think that we should professionalize it. I think, again, that we have grown to a place where it is important for us to professionalize every single aspect of our government. And it's time for us to have a full-fledged police department with merit pay and merit action in place, which is much different than a sheriff's department.
Thank you, sir. So, we'll go next to Caleb. We'll give you, you know, 30 seconds to respond, as you were called out first by Mr. Hayes, and then we can go back and let you answer your question.
Okay. So, in terms of, I'm not sure what specific comment he was making. I worked for many years with the Homeschool Legal Defense Association. There were many policies within the Department of Education we were concerned about. Homeschooling was illegal for years and years and years because of the Department of Education, so perhaps those were some of the statements that were taken. I don't know. I mean, you can just throw out in specific instances. As far as, now, do I answer the question at this point?
Yes, sir, if you're ready.
Okay, great. As far as the question that was actually before us, which is ultimately whether or not we should go to a more professional office. The debate is really about, and quite frankly, the great thing about a professional department is, guess who gets to hire the chief of police? The board of supervisors. And, so, there's a lot more oversight that goes there. But it is a little bit more cumbersome, quite frankly. The great thing about a sheriff is, if he's a benevolent dictator, so to speak, he can run a great department and can really go to bat for them. As I mentioned before, I am one of the, I am the preferred attorney for the Police Benevolence Association. I represent many of these officers. The position of the PBA is that, in most cases, they would like a professional department. I, of course, would be concerned about the cost that that would bring. And so, before I commit to a police department, although I do like the idea of regular accountability, before I commit to the police department, I would wanna know what the costs are, and whether or not our sheriff was behind it. Thank you.
And Sam, yes, sir.
This one, I don't have, I don't have a position on, but it's one of the, one of the things I'm looking forward to hearing both sides of, on the days, the sheriff has been really busy campaigning, so it's hard to have, to hear his side of the story. He's awfully busy, and I'm not sure that he thinks I have a good chance of winning, so it's hard, it's hard to get his ear for very long. But, but on the days, there's a, I've, I've, I've studied the issue, but I have a lot of questions that I'm looking forward to asking. And that's the role of the supervisor, is to listen to all sides, to find, figure out what the real issues are, and ask the right questions. Ask the right questions of the sheriff, other people, and that goes more generally for the staff. Earlier, they mentioned that, that me going around and figuring out who's to blame for Gable Farm would be like being the staff. Well, you're, as the supervisor, you're the boss of the staff, and so if the job's not getting done, you need to figure out why it's not getting done and how, and how to fix that.
Okay, thank you very much. We've now come to the closing this evening, so we'll go ahead and start in the opposite order of how we began this evening. So, we'll start with two-minute closing statements from Forrest Hayes, Caleb Kirschner, and Sam Croys. Forrest, your two minutes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I first of all just wanna thank you for the opportunity to come before you here today, and my two worthy opponents for being here. I think we had a robust exchange of ideas, and I really respect both of them for having the courage to step out and step up to lead our community. I've always said, as long as I've been in public service, and it's the first time I've ever run for anything, but I've worked for a number of politicians. So, it takes a special person and a special sort of courage to put your name on that yard sign, and so for that, I applaud both of you. It's hard work. I think that we're at a moment in time when Catoctin has the opportunity to realize its full potential. It's very important, the decision that we make on November 5th, because it can either propel us to new heights, where we get our land use policies into a place of balance, where we get our schools into a place where not only the quality education that happens in the classroom is retained and enhanced, but that the school buildings themselves are right-sized and appropriate for the number of children that are attending. We can't have things like trailers in the back of the schools in Loudon County. And I think that we don't have another four years to waste. And so, if there's anything that I would share with you tonight, I'm hoping that if you remember one thing I said, we don't have another four years to drive on a dangerous Rule 15. We don't have another four years to have our kids in schools that are too small for them, they got dangerous trailers in the back. We don't have another four years where our businesses and our ag tourism businesses don't have the benefit of simple things like the internet. How do you run a business today without reliable broadband access? And we have to make sure we make investments, so our farmers can be profitable, and so that they can be the leaders in the ag industry that they once were again. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I really appreciate it.
Caleb Kirschner, your two minutes, sir.
Thank you, everyone, for your attendance, for your attention, and for the opponents up here. I agree with Forrest, it was fun, it was lively, and certainly, we had some views that come out, and that were different, and/or in concert with each other. I love Loudon. I've lived here 25 years. I'm raising my four boys here. I work here in Loudon County. My office is one block away from the government center. Unlike many of the supervisors, I'll be able to jump over to the office and be able to serve this community as, as effectively as I possibly can. I wanna retire in this county. I wanna retire in Catoctin. And so, I have an extremely vested interest in what it looks like 20, 30, 40 years from now. As I mentioned at the beginning of this whole thing, I believe that I have the necessary background. I was a farmer, a sheepshearer. I'm involved in the Loudon Fair and Associates promoting agriculture, 4H, in this county already, have done so for many years. I moved here in 95. I have worked on bringing legislation together, written much of it, brought both sides of the aisle together, put coalitions together to get things done on Capitol Hill. I have an degree in finance, I have a law degree, and I have run a small, and I am running a small business for the last 10 years. I have lived in every single policy area this county has to offer. The suburban and JML, the transition policy area, the rural policy area, and some of our towns. And 20 of those years have been spent in Catoctin. I'm asking for your vote, and for the ability to represent you. And I will bring every single one of those skills and background that I have to bear on the policies that we've talked about today. Thank you.
And then Sam Croys, your two minutes, sir.
Thanks. Thanks again, Colton, Loudon Times Mirror, Loudon Now, for putting this on, and thanks for everybody for coming out. I'm running to keep rural Loudon rural. Like I said, it's the most important issue in this district, I think in the county overall, because if we suburbanize rural Loudon, it's gonna bankrupt the county. The costs are too high with, with houses. We can't improve the roads fast enough. There's too much competition for the road money. We can't afford to, we can't afford it. There's schools, we can't afford to build new schools all over this part of the county. So, it's the number-one issue, and it's tied in with all these other issues, so it's like the number one through five, or maybe even number one through 10 issue. And, you can trust me to follow through, because my livelihood is tied to rural Loudon being rural. I'm the eighth generation, my kids that are growing up on the farm are the ninth generation. I hope that they're gonna be able to take over that, I hope that they'll be able to take over the farm and still operate it with rural Loudon being rural. But I care a lot, about a lot of other things, too. I care about my kids' education, I care about every kid's education. We need to have equity in the schools throughout the county. And there's a lot of, there's many issues besides keeping rural Loudon rural. I care a lot about them, and I see myself as a servant for the people. I am gonna bring people together, talk through these issues, find solutions. I'm hunting for good ideas. If you have any, let me know. I don't care if it's a Democratic idea, I don't care if it's a Republican idea. I don't have to take a good idea and ask anybody's permission to run with it. I don't have to consult my party, I don't have to consult my donors, or anybody else. I'm gonna take a good idea, build a coalition, and solve our problems.
All right. And that wraps it up. If everybody wants to continue giving an applause for the candidates, and I just wanted to say, I'm so impressed with the turnout tonight. It is really impressive for a Monday night, so, thank you, everyone, for being engaged. All right, so a few more thank yous. I do wanna make sure that we thank the Levitts Volunteer Fire Company for donating this facility tonight. They just recently redid it, so please give them a round of applause, and thank you for their beautiful facilities to host us this evening. I do also wanna make sure we thank the candidates up here for coming out. Once again, it is not easy to come out and answer your all's questions. So, thank you all for submitting the questions, and thank you for the candidates for coming out. And lastly, I would also like to thank Norm from Loudon Now, and Trevor here from Loudon Times Mirror, for moderating us. This evening, we did cover out every topic, from public safety, to traffic, to land use. The next debate will be in Percival. It'll be the Blue Ridge Board of Supervisors Debate. Again, the Blue Ridge Board of Supervisors Debate will be in Percival on October 3rd. The chair debate will be in Leesburg on October 9th. So, again, the chair debate will be in Leesburg on October 9th. Thank you all, and have a great evening.